Hi, everyone. Welcome to this edition of the League of Women Voters briefing. This will be all about the Chicago Elected School Board. My name is Jane Ruby and I am president of the League of Women Voters of Chicago. The League of Women Voters of Chicago is a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure everyone is represented in our democracy. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy and education. The League of Women Voters of Chicago encourages informed and active participation in government while influencing public policy. We never endorse or oppose political parties or candidates, but we are political. And we do this in two different roles, voter service and citizen education, where we present unbiased, nonpartisan information about elections, the voting process and issues. And also through action and advocacy, we are nonpartisan, but after study, we use our positions to advocate for or against particular policies in the public interest. And with that, I will turn it over to Ray, who is chair of our schools committee, to introduce our speaker.
Good morning. We are very grateful to have Becky VV come and speak to us again about the school board. This is her second time coming and talking with us. She is the bureau chief for Chalk Beat for Chicago. You can get Chalk Beat online and follow all the thing, anything you'd want to know about the Chicago schools. Our committee has been busy following the Chicago Board election, and that's been our major focus, but we could use a lot of help. We need somebody that is willing to view the school board meetings and write a short report about the meetings. The meetings that you don't have to go to, they are recorded, so at your convenience. You can follow it online, just a short report on what's going on, any important developments. That would be really helpful to us. We're a very small committee. So as most of you are aware, the school board election is going to be this November. It is the first time for an elected school board in Chicago. We are, it will be a hybrid board because some of the members will be appointed by the mayor and some will be elected. And I'm going to let Becky tell you about the school board election. If there are any questions you may have, please put them in the chat. And then after Becky's presentation, we will begin the question and answer area. So let's have Becky come on and introduce herself.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much, Ray, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me this morning. I hope everybody's enjoying their Saturday, and this is a very good way to kick it off, I would say. Like Ray mentioned, I'm the bureau chief for Chalk Beat Chicago. We are a nonprofit education news website dedicated to independent journalism on education, telling the story of education. We're also a newsroom of our now parent company, which is Civic News Company. We have two other newsrooms that launched, one in 2020 called Vote Beat, dedicated to covering the story of democracy and free and fair elections. There are four bureaus in four swing states, Arizona, Texas, Michigan, and Pennsylvania. So if you haven't checked out Vote Beat, I feel like this is a crew that might be very interested in reading some Vote Beat content. And then just last month, we launched Health Beat, which is in Atlanta and New York, and it's dedicated to telling the story of public health. So Chalk Beat's our original newsroom, and we've been in Chicago since 2018. I've been the bureau chief there since 2022. Prior to that, I was the education and city politics reporter at WBEZ. So you may recognize my name from that. And today, we're going to talk about school board elections. So I'm going to share my screen and go through, hopefully, a relatively brief presentation. I will pause halfway through for questions. And from there, we can, at the end of it, we can talk through more questions if you have them. So let me get this going in. There we go. All right. Like I said, we, this is a presentation about Chicago's school board elections for 2024. Ray briefly mentioned this, but let me go over a quick overview of what's to come. Chicago voters on November 5th are going to elect school board members for the very first time to govern over what is the nation's fourth largest school district. Chicago Public Schools used to be the third largest school district, but after about a decade of pretty dramatic enrollment declines, we are now the fourth largest school district after New York, LA, and Miami-Dade. This shift will end 30 years of mayoral control, and I'll go through the history in just a moment. But what you need to know, the most thing that you need to know is there are 10 districts for this election. That's with 275,000 residents in each, roughly the size of a state senate district. And total, 47 people filed to run. They were able to begin collecting signatures in late March. And on June 26th, which was the deadline to file, 47 people filed. After challenges to those petitions, however, 31 are going to be on the ballot. And I'll go through their names at the second half of the presentation. But there are also four people who are running as write-in candidates. They filed paperwork to run as write-ins. So let's go through how we got here. Some of you probably remember this. So this timeline probably isn't all news to you, but I think it's good for grounding us in how we got here and why we have this moment, this historic moment upon us. So I'll back up, and I didn't put this date on the slide, but in 1988, many of you know, Chicago or Illinois passed a law for reforming Chicago schools that created local school councils at every school. These are sort of mini school boards, and many of you probably are familiar with them. It's a mix of parents, school staff, teachers, and community representatives who govern things at the school level. They are, they get to choose the principal and they get to approve a budget. Now, those budgets are provided by central office. And in 95, a legislation that followed that bill that created local school councils shifted to full mayoral control. And at that point, many people will tell you that that began the diminishment of the power of those local school councils due to a number of policies that then the mayor and mayors since then impact enacted. Between 95 and I guess 2010, 2012, there were, you know, many decades of education reform, mostly with a top-down approach from central office. There was a shift towards school choice and this portfolio-style approach to the schools in our school system that really did this annual ritual of closing the lowest performing schools every year and opening new ones with new ideas and new approaches. Most of the new schools don't have neighborhood boundaries. People can apply to get into them. It's a mix of magnets and charters and schools with special programming and selective schools that kids test into. Many of you are probably familiar with that, but I just think it's good to root us in the lay of the land. And really, one of the things that I think drove activists by 2012, 13 to push for an elected school board was this feeling from communities that had been most impacted by those closures and by those reforms in a way that they did not feel was positive for their communities. And they felt they needed representation on the school board. And so there was a big push, starting a little before 2012, but around then, 2012, 13 was the school year in which 50 schools closed. And it was the first time in 2012 that there were non-binding referendum on the ballots in dozens of precincts, asking voters, would you be in favor of an elected school board in Chicago? There were more of those in 2015 on the ballot, and it showed overwhelming support for an elected school board. It wasn't, however, until 2021 that state lawmakers passed legislation to create a half-elected, half-appointed, 21-member school board by 2025 and a fully-elected board by 2027. This Asian approach was, I think, politically palatable for lawmakers who, you know, passed this bill and then the governor Pritzker, who signed it into law. At the time, Mayor Lori Lightfoot was the mayor, and she supported a hybrid approach. It wasn't, however, until 2024, when a lot of the details had to get ironed out. And I won't worry with all of the politics behind the scene, but eventually, by March of this year, we had a map that shows the different electoral districts from which people who will be elected will, the neighborhoods they'll represent, and these are the districts. And they are labeled, I tried to label them for you, and I, again, will go through this in more detail. I do want to share on this slide, and at the end, I will share this link out. Chalk Beat in June published this interactive map. Can you see my screen, or are you only still seeing the PowerPoint?
I see you.
Just the PowerPoint.
Just the PowerPoint. I want to share this one moment, and I'm going to share this window for you. So we published this map. It is an interactive walkthrough of how the districts are set up. And it gives, again, a lot of the history that I just went over. But on the second button, there is, if you allow your browser to share location, you can click Find My District, and it will locate where you are. Unfortunately, we did not build in to this map a way to enter your address, but I will share with you that we are going to be launching on Wednesday. I think it's going to be live tomorrow, but we're going to be doing some testing, a voter guide with the Sun Times and WBEZ that will allow you to enter your address, and it will take you to which district you are in. And then you'll be able to see, to see your candidates and read their answers to our questionnaire. But I wanted to share this with you guys specifically because, as you see, after I clicked that and shared my location, it tells me I am located in District 3. That's where I live. And in 2026, I will be in 3B, which I will talk about a little later in the presentation. But this map also walks through, and maybe many of you who followed this a little more closely, this year, we have 10 districts. In two years, they will be split in half, and there will be 20 districts. So ultimately, once we get to the fully-elected board, you'll be one of 20 versus one of 10. But for this first round, everybody should just figure out which one of the 10 they're in. But I hope that this resource will be a useful link for all of your members. And I can go back now to the presentation. All right. Okay, so there's our map. And I will actually pause here to ask if anyone has any questions before we go through each of these districts and who is running and what some of the top issues are. Anyone have any questions, or is anyone in the chat questions?
I put a question in the chat. It's mostly if you could pop this URL and the URL of the site that's going live on Wednesday in the chat. That would be fantastic. You can do it whenever. You don't need to do it now.
There is the URL for the one I just showed you. The URL for the site going live Wednesday, I have, but it may not, you won't be able to open it today.
Sure.
I will drop it there, and you guys, I also, you know, Ray, I can follow up with you and Madeline and share that.
Right, we can share it with our members.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And in addition to that voter guide, we are launching Wednesday, and I'll get to this at the very end. But we are also launching a series of what we're calling district profiles, which is essentially a story for each district with more on each candidate. And those will be part in partnership with Block Club. So if you're a Block Club reader or subscriber to any of the Block Club news lists, you'll also get information specific to your district. I'm going to walk through pretty quickly who's running and give you like my high-level detail on who these people are. I will say, before I go through all of this, a lot of people have asked me, like, and were, I think, worried or hand-wringing about, oh, is this just going to turn into, you know, politics and people who want to aspire to higher office? And that may be the case. I think this round of 35 people who are running, I have been very optimistic and heartened by just their resumes. They're, I think they're all very well-meaning people with deep education backgrounds or at least a passion for education. And so maybe that's just the optimist in me, but I think it's important to know that, I think, we have a really, in some ways, I feel very hopeful about democracy in this moment because of just the wide variety of people who are running. And really, as I've watched them interact with one another, like, we did photos with them in the parks last week with Block Club, and, you know, coming and going, people would chit-chat with one another. And they're very, they've been pretty cordial with one another. I haven't seen too much nastiness, although I do know that that is, some of that is beginning. So in District 1, which is the north far west, northwest side, all of the neighborhoods that end in Park, Edison Park, Portage Park, Jefferson Park, Dunning, some of those neighborhoods, has two options. And they are two mothers and former educators. Jennifer Custer is a stay-at-home mom right now. She is, however, a former teacher and dean of students and administrator, mostly in Chicago suburbs. She grew up in Wisconsin and moved here after her first teaching job outside of Madison, Wisconsin, has worked in the suburbs for more than a decade. She was one of the union reps at, I believe, Atasca. And she, her youngest little kid, she's got two little kids, about my kids' age. I have kids that are five and three, pretty sure hers are five and almost three. But she has a child who just entered in their neighborhood school and is in, I believe, pre-K or kindergarten. And then Michelle Pierre is also a former educator who began her career in New York City. She began, became a principal in Washington DC through the New Leaders Program. She was an administrator in the Cleveland Public School District. And she moved to Chicago in 2018 to become the chief of schools at the Learn Charter School Network. And now she is back with new leaders. She is, they're both CPS parents. Michelle Pierre is a former local school council member. She also sits on the board of her daughter's contract school, which is Chi Arts, which is a Chicago Public Contract School. District 2 is, has four candidates, one of whom, I don't have as much information about, I have a photo, but the gray box is for a gentleman named Bruce Leon. He's the 50th Ward Democratic Committee person, I believe, and a board member at a Hebrew Day School. He's running, as well as Margaret Maggie Collerton Hooper, who's up in the upper-left corner. She is a CPS single mom, two kids in a neighborhood public school. She worked in City Hall. She's also got a familiar last name and is the daughter of former Senate President John Collerton. Ebony DeBarry is the director of educational initiatives at One North Side. She's a longtime Uptown organizer and a former CPS teacher, parent, and current local school council member. And then Kate Doyle is, she was a former special education teacher in New York City. She is a nonprofit co-founder and CEO. And she also serves as the vice president of the Greater Rock Organization and has one young child who she says she plans to send to Chicago Public Schools and very much identifies as a Chicago Public Schools parent. District 3, my district, we've got two folks, Jason Donas. He's the chief of people operations at a nonprofit. And he also was a former teacher and leader through Teach for America. And then Carlos Aribas Jr. is a longtime Humboldt Park resident, former alumni counselor at a Noble Street School, UIC College Prep, and is currently the spokesperson at COPA, the Civilian Office of Police Accountability. Both of them, and Donas also is a longtime Humboldt Park resident. District 4 is the most candidates with six. Some of you, I think I heard somebody referencing District 4 maybe earlier. This is a busy race, and we have a lot of different candidates. I'll try to go through them quickly, and the upper, starting with the upper-left, Kimberly Brown in the blue jacket. She's a marketing professor, I'm sorry, professional, and an adjunct professor, as well as a parent of a child CPS, believe at Nettle Horse Neighborhood School. Andrew Davis is a nonprofit leader, also a CPS parent and former LSC member. He's next to Kimberly Brown's picture. Thomas Day is right below her. His child just started in CPS as well, so he's a CPS parent and the co-founder of Illinois Veterans for Change. Carmen Giosa is next to him. She's a CPS parent. She's the local school council chair, I believe, at Lincoln Elementary. And she's also a former CPS administrator and former CPS teacher. Then down in the lower left is Ellen Rosenfeld. She's a family and community engagement manager at Chicago Public Schools, which she just recently told me she's also taking a leave from that role for the remainder of the campaign. And if she is elected, she would not, she would have to quit her job. That is part of the state legislation that created the elected school board. You cannot be an employee of the school district and serve on the board. So she would have to leave that role. She's also a CPS parent and a former CPS teacher. Karen Zaccor is the final one, next to Ellen's photo on the bottom. And she is a longtime, now retired teacher from CPS. She was mostly at Uplift High School and helped found Uplift when it became that high school. And she is a former LSC member, both at Uplift and previous schools that she served on. District 5 is a huge district. This is actually my, one other fun fact between District 4 and District 5. District 5 has 105 schools. It has the most schools of any district. You'll see when you go through our interactive map, we lay out for folks that although these districts were drawn as electoral districts to represent 275,000 voters, they do not have an even number of schools or even schoolchildren enrolled in those schools. We haven't looked yet, mostly because it's very difficult to figure out exact CPS student addresses. We can't tell how many are CPS residents within the district, but we know the enrollment of the schools in those districts. And District 5, while it doesn't have the most enrollment, it has by far the most schools. In part because of the whole West Side was, again, as I mentioned earlier, an area where there were a lot of closures and sort of reopenings, a lot of new charters, a lot of magnets created. And so you had, you just had sort of like this constant, I think, like a proliferation of new school models. Like I said, there's the most charters in that district, and there are the most schools overall. And this is the one district that is actually now an uncontested race. There were two people that made the ballot, Erin G. Two Brown and a woman named Michaela Blaze. But shortly after the ballot went to be printed, Blaze withdrew and said that she no longer would be running. Her name will still appear on the ballot. So if you know anyone who lives in District 5, they may see her name on the ballot. This sometimes happens in Chicago, but they will not be counting her votes. Additionally, there are two people who filed paperwork to run as write-ins. Yu Chef Shukani, Shukani practiced that name, and he knows that his name is hard to spell, so a write-in candidacy is a tall order for him. But he's an attorney and a founder of an education nonprofit as well. He does not have children, but hopes to, and hopes to one day send them to CPS. And then Kurnetha Jones is the other person running. We don't have a photo of her, and I don't have as much information. She is a retired CPS teacher. All right, District 6, we have four candidates, three of whom are on the ballot, and then one write-in, Danielle Wallace. So Danielle is down in the lower right. Up at the upper left, starting, we have Jessica Biggs. She's a CPS parent and a former teacher and school principal. Andre Smith, who's next to her, is, he's an entrepreneur and also a recent candidate for Illinois House 5th District. He's run for other elected offices in this district, or I guess in this area, before. And then Anusha Fotakura, she is the deputy director of Citizen Action Illinois and also a former teacher. And I forgot, as I was going through this, to mention any of these folks endorsements, but I do know that Anusha and G. Two on the last slide both have the CTU endorsement. In District 4, I believe Karen Zaccor is the one with the CTU endorsement. See, there's another group, the Illinois Network of Charter Schools, has not announced their endorsements yet. And then we have followed CPS Parents for Buses, which is a group of parents who are advocating around busing and returning busing to all students, has made some endorsements. And I apologize, I don't have them all on the slide, but they will be in our voter guide. So if those are issues you care strongly about, you can identify which candidates have those endorsements. District 7, there's three folks, Raquel Dawn, Yessenia Lopez, and Ava Villalobos. Raquel is a CPS parent and local school council member at Jones College Prep. Yessenia Lopez, she used to be the Latino Outreach Director with Governor JB Pritzker's campaign, and she currently works for the Illinois Secretary of State. She also got, early on, before she filed any paperwork, Jesus Chui Garcia came out and endorsed her. And then Ava Villalobos is right here in the middle, and she is an accountant and has four children. And she currently sends them, I believe it's currently sending them to private schools. And we actually had talked to her last year. She was one of several parents who advocated for the Invest in Kids Tax Credit Scholarship Program. But she also has said before the pandemic that she had a child in Chicago Public Schools. So yeah, she's a proponent, I would say, of choice. District 8, there's two candidates. Angel Gutierrez is the chief advancement officer at Chicago Hope Academy, which is a private high school. He also is a former leader at the Archdiocese, I'm sorry, Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese. And then Felix Ponse is a CPS music teacher and professional tromboneist. He also has the CTU endorsement, given that he's a former teacher. And District 9, Lynetta Thomas is a community activist and army vet. Lamont Raymond Williams is the chief of staff and general counsel to Commissioner Bill Lowery on the Cook County Board of Commissioners, if anyone's familiar with Commissioner Lowery. That Lamont is his chief of staff. Michael Lewis is actually the one person running who's already sat on the school board. For a very brief time, he was appointed by Lori Lightfoot at the very end of her term. Shortly after, I forget who it was, I think it was when Sendhil Revelory stepped down. So he served briefly in the spring of 2023, and then was replaced by Brandon Johnson that July. He is the acting director of the Cook County Juvenile Probation and Court Services and is also a current member on the Board of Education's Special Education Advisory Committee, which is a new subcommittee of the board that focuses on serving students with disabilities. And then Therese Boyle is a retired school psychologist. And she also ran for CTU president in 2019 against Stacey Davis Gates. She was the lead candidate within the union's elections, and they challenged Stacey Davis Gates. And that was Teresa Slate. They were unsuccessful, obviously, but important background for people to know about Teresa. And then in District 10, we also have four candidates. There are a lot of people who filed to run in District 10, but not only formulated on. And then we do have one woman who filed to run as a write-in. Her name's Rosita Chatonda. She is a retired CTU teacher, I'm sorry, CPS teacher as well, and was a former teachers' union organizer. Up though in the upper right, upper, sorry, upper-left corner, Robert Jones. He's a pastor at Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church, and also was in the Diet Hunger Strike. Adam Parrot-Sheffer, right next to him, is a former CPS principal. He's also a current CPS parent and an adjunct lecturer at Harvard. He also served as an administrator in the Chicago suburbs and the New York City Public Schools. And then right here, we have Che Ryan Fest Smith, who many people may or may not know or recognize the name. He's an artist, a Grammy award-winning songwriter and rapper. He also has, he's a community activist and has some nonprofit, does nonprofit arts work in communities along the South Side. And then finally, Karen Norrington Reeves was, she is a current CPS parent and the current chair of her daughter's school, which is Otis, and it's, she's the local school council chair over there. Her daughter, I believe, is the Heart of Hearing, and I know it's in Otis's cluster program, which is a program specifically for students who need those services. So she serves on that local school council. She is also a former, she formerly led the Cook County Workforce Partnership Development. I'm getting the name of that wrong, but she was in community and government relations for a long time. And then she also ran for Illinois's first congressional district after Bobby Rush stepped down. And Bobby Rush did give her an endorsement in that race, but she was ultimately unsuccessful. And that's now held by Jonathan Jackson. So those are all the candidates. I will pause to see, do we have any questions there? Looks like someone just dropped.
Yeah, we're taking care of that. And the League of Women Voters of Chicago is hosting candidates forum for District 4, and that will be at the Brennan and School. But in the chat, there is a highlight you can click on to find out all the information you need for that. That's for District 4 with the six members running. I don't see any other questions.
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to say, save the day at October 7th. If you live in the 6th District, 5 o'clock at the Unitarian Church in Hyde Park, you'll, the same, you'll be able to find other candidate forms from this link as they, as we finalize them. But I do have a question for you, Becky, and maybe, maybe I'm jumping the gun. What I haven't really heard is, is this a compensated position? And what kind of, what are the, what's the time commitment? Are people expected to be, yeah, just the time commitment, full-time, part-time? be, yeah, just the time commitment, full-time, part-time, keep a job?
Yeah, so it is not a compensated position and this is something that actually came up in other subsequent sort of trailer bills and there have been people pushing for this to be compensated in some way. We've looked at the issue of compensating board members all over, you know, across other chalkbeat bureaus. I know in Colorado and in Denver, they began compensating school board, board members recently. I don't believe it's though, it's not like a full salary position out in Denver, that is. This is a debate and this is something people have a lot of questions about. The time commitment, the board estimates, the, the current board and board staff have told us that it's about thirty hours a month. So it is a, you know, part-time if, if you're committing to it in what the board considers to be the right level of commitment. And however, because there are some stipulations about like you can't hold another job or you can't, you can't work for the school district, for instance, like it does eliminate, you know, it's certain people who would be able to, you know, hold another job and then hold this as a part-time job. And so, no, they're not compensated, but thirty hours a month is the estimate. I know, you know, I'm sure, I guess it depends on what level of also like constituent engagement you want to do as a school board member and who you, you know, consider. Do you consider the schools and the principals and the staff in your district and the students and families your main constituents or do you consider everybody your constituents? And, you know, as an, as somebody who covered city council for many years, like aldermen will tell you, like, they spend, so they do spend a lot of time and and man-hours just of doing constituent level work, so. Thirty hours is the number that I've provided to people, but, but it could be more, it could be less. I hope that answers your question. And I will get to a couple of things like I should, should note. And I'll just finish out my last, I don't have very many slides left, but I'll go back to the presentation and finish out if there are no other specific questions at this moment. Okay, all right, going back. So there is district ten. So we have, after Election Day, those ten elected will be sworn in on January fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. Then after November fifth, the process is not over. So I want to talk a little bit about what's over here on the light blue side. These eleven appointments. So because I mentioned we're doing a phased-in approach, the school board will have eleven appointees from the mayor that will join these ten elected members to be sworn in on January fifteenth. The mayor will appoint eleven members, one can live anywhere. That will be the school board president. Ten can, ten must be from the ten districts. And the twist here is that the appointees from each district must reside on the opposite side of the district as the winner. So we don't yet know what those exact restrictions will be because we don't know yet who wins. Once we know who wins and once frankly, the mayor knows who wins, then the mayor has to look at appointments and he can only select people who live in the opposite side. So I'll give you an example. I live in three, I live in three B. Both of the candidates in my race, I believe, live in three A. The mayor would have to select somebody who lives on sort of my side, the three B side, as his appointee because the winner will be coming from three A. It's a twist and it is complicated and it was how lawmakers decided to iron out these details. This will then again matter in twenty twenty-six when all twenty-one members are up for election. Because if you were an elected member this year, so that let's say the three A winner, this year, the winner is from three A. When they run again, if they run again in twenty twenty-six and win, they get a four-year term. And then three B gets a two-year term. And then from there, everything will be staggered every other year, much like Congress. I have been trying not to like bog people down in those details because they'll matter for twenty twenty-six, but I think they don't much matter this year unless you're super strategic with your vote and you're thinking like, well, I like these two people and one lives in A and one lives in B and this one might get the mayor's appointment. I think just vote for you, who you feel aligns most with you. But I think it's important for people to understand that this process won't fully end on November fifth. We will, there will be some questions and really up to the mayor, there'll be a lot of anticipation, I would think. And we'll do our best to find out, you know, how the mayor is thinking about his appointments. But yeah, those ten from the ten districts, so nice and fun, complicated stuff. And then they'll all be sworn in on January of twenty twenty-six, I'm sorry, January fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. Twenty-one members, there'll be a hybrid board. Obviously, given that the mayor gets eleven appointees, we will presume that then he will still have a sort of de facto mayoral control. But as we see right now with his appointed board, they're not always in alignment. His appointees have disagreed with some of his wishes in recent weeks and months. And I'm happy to answer those questions in the Q and A. I didn't prepare any slides for them because it's a very, it's fast news and moves, news sort of situation. And then as I mentioned, sort of on the last slide in twenty twenty-six, all of these seats will be up for election. Some will get two-year terms, some will get four, and a school board president is going to be elected at large by everyone in Chicago. So your ballot will have essentially candidates for school board president. Every ballot will have those and then you'll have your district candidate. So you'll get to cast kind of two votes for school board in the same way that you cast a vote for mayor and alderman. The one other thing I want to note before I get to the resources slide is just, and this maybe helps for the transition. People always ask me like, what does the school board even really do? Like, what is the school board's role really? Like, some people want to know what their powers are and what jurisdiction they have. And there is, the board policies are all published online. They are just like, you know, city council rules of order, like you can look through by Roman numeral and figure out like what the rules are and what their jurisdiction is. But I really boil it down to they have two core functions and those core functions are passing an annual budget every year and then hiring, firing and evaluating district leader, in this case, the CPS CEO. And then setting policy as it relates to like curriculum and the student experience. So those are the core roles of the board. And finally, I'm putting a link to our website, again, another link to our interactive map. I will share these links. I didn't put them in the slide, but I'm happy to add them. But the voter guide I mentioned to you earlier that will launch with WBEZ and the Sun Times on September twenty-fifth. This is this coming Wednesday and our Block Club partnership also will launch and we'll have all of this collected on our website on a page as well. And I didn't mention this, but I should plug it. We just finished up, wrapped up a five-part series that was sort of a primer to the school board elections, which I called Explaining, we called Explaining CPS. And it goes through essentially core parts of the district and the core functions, sort of how the school board relates. So we did one on the students in CPS. We did one on academic performance. We did one on all the facilities. That's another thing, actually, I should mention that school board members will have, you know, quite a bit of control. In addition to the budget, they'll pass a capital plan, which determines how well-up kept the facilities in their district are. And then there's one about the employees and I'm trying to think on the last one. We've had a lot of landing planes right now, so all of those resources will be collected on our chalkbeat homepage and we're going to be pushing them out this week. And you can always just use us as a resource and please share out this information and any useful links and information you find on our website. And hopefully the voter guides are very useful for your folks as well. And I see a question in the chat about the future voter ID card. Yes. Yes, your future voter ID card should tell you whether you're three A or three B. Our interactive map also, like I mentioned, will tell you whether you're A or B in twenty twenty-six.
And there will be someone running, when it's a fully elected school board, there will be a ten A election and a ten B election separate, right? Depending on where I live. Okay, just double checking.
Yes, yeah. And like I mentioned, your, your ballot would have like the president as an option and then much the same way the alderman does. But also what, you know, once we know whether yours is getting a four to your term, like you, there might be off-cycle years when you don't vote, you know, like every two years you wouldn't, you wouldn't pick, but every four you would.
Could you repeat the website where you can pick up and watch this five-part series?
Oh, yes. It's on chalkbeat.org and it's, the series is dubbed Explaining CPS. And I can show you in my screen an example. Actually, one of the things I have to do Monday that we haven't done because the final one ran on Friday. And what I have to do is I have to collect the five of them into one spot where the five links exist. But if you go to, let me share my screen really quickly, our website.
And we can, we can link any of this sort of information also, you know, on our website. And when we send out, you know, the presentation to the people on the call, so we can, we can connect people with it.
Perfect, yeah. I'm just showing on our website, these two here, Explaining CPS, Explaining CPS. Those are two of the parts of the series. And then here's another one. Oh, this was the fifth one. I couldn't remember. The types of, the different types of schools and the history of how we ended up with like a choice system. And then what to know about the students. So those five all just ran this week and I can send links to all five of them after the presentation. I'll add them to the slide before I share the, the slides.
Great. We have a couple, we have a couple of questions in the chat. So someone asks, can you talk about the issue of the mayor's goal of preserving neighborhood schools with the pressure to expand school choice? Any insight into these candidates' positions?
Yes, so we didn't have the strategic plan when we sent our questionnaire out, but we knew based off of the resolution that the school board passed last December that this was a move that they intended to make. So we did ask the school board members or candidates, I'm sorry. We asked them, you know, do you support that shift toward neighborhood schools and away from these emphasis on school choice? I can't go through all thirty-five answers right this moment, but that will be in our voter guide. We also asked a number of them about the, their support of the privately operated, publicly funded charter schools. And there's, you'll see actually in the voter guide, like we asked them to answer yes or no. There were a couple who like, we had eight questions that were specifically yes or no. And so you can see in the first snapshot, like their headshot is under yes or no. So it's like easy to see and then you can click to see that, read their full answer. And you can also click to read out their like full responses because we also asked eight open-ended questions about different school issues. And I will say like that it's pretty divided. I think that there are a lot of people. It's divided. I also think there are very few people who say, yeah, let's just get rid of all selective and choice schools. Like I think most people will say like, we can do both and like invest in both. And I think that's really sort of been the position of the current administration under Martinez is we're not trying to like take away or diminish the magnet or selective or charter, like higher performing schools that take kids from all over the city. But we also do want to invest in neighborhood schools and make people feel like those are also great options too. Because what happened during the three decades of reform, as we moved into this portfolio model, was that you had this downward spiral that would happen where people would exit a neighborhood school and enrollment would drop. And because enrollment was so tethered to funding, you couldn't, then the principal would still have to cut. And so you'd end up in this spiral of losing enrollment, then cut, then lose more enrollment because you need cuts. And so the district has already moved away from that with their funding model shifting back toward a sort of needs-based allocation and a position-based funding model. I hope that answered the question. I, I got a question as a direct message that I'm happy to answer. I'm happy to read and.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I, I don't see them.
Yeah, some I, some I think are, one, well, one came to me, this was from Gail. Will the school board members be required to participate in professional development so that they will be prepared to take on their responsibilities? So all school board members in the state of Illinois, including the current appointed board members, do have to go through, there's I believe, three different trainings, ethics. I want to say it's like a fiduciary budget sort of training and then just like a general school board training. There's a couple of different groups that do these. Illinois Association of School Board does them. And school board members, like I said, the appointed ones have to do those. And this elected body will also have to, you know, part, do those. I will show you on the CP, I didn't know this until recently because I asked this question. I think as for many years, the appointed members, I don't know if they, maybe they, I don't know if they did, if they did these kinds of trainings in the past, but now underneath, if you drop a, I'm going to drop in the, to everyone in the meeting, I'll just send it to Gail. If you look at board members' bios on the cpsboe.org website, underneath their bio, there are links to PDFs. So they have to be trained on the open meetings act. They have to be, they had to do DCFS mandated reporter training, harassment discrimination training and protecting Chicago's children training. And they post them now on their bios, so you can see who has been up to date. And I believe that they're supposed to have those within six months of taking office. But don't quote me on that. I can't recall what the deadline technically is for that. And I don't know like what punishment there is if they never, if they don't do it. Suppose it's just a bad luck. But I hope that answered the question. Catherine?
I'm always a question box.
I have traffic in quick.
So across the country, school boards and library boards are, are being, I guess infiltrated is too much of a push in one direction, but I'm going to use it anyway. Infiltrated by people who are backed with lots of money from outside organizations, which lead to book banning and critical race theory kinds of things. From what I heard, I didn't hear anything that, I didn't, I didn't, do you see any evidence of that happening in our Chicago Electors School Board campaigns?
Currently, no. I don't see pushes from people about book banning. I will say, one of my reporters did cover a forum and there was a candidate, I believe it's the write-in in district five, Kurnetha, who had a lot to say about sex ed curriculum and concerns around like what, what we often see rhetoric-wise on the, on the, I guess on the right about like LGBTQ students, trans students, that sort of thing and concerns that the CPS sex ed curriculum is inappropriate and indoctrinating. And I'm not, as a parent, I, my kids are very young. I have not gotten that letter home or anything, but I have not heard beyond that, I have not seen or heard candidates with platforms that are, you know, pushing for, you know, book bans or curriculum restrictions. I don't see that. Again, when I kind of mentioned my optimism at the start, I think that we have a field of candidates for the most part with like pretty deep resumes and passions in the space and are mostly well-meaning people. And if anything, like the number of people who got knocked off the ballot just also proved to me, like, oh, there's a lot of like novices. And even as a political reporter, I had people like coming to me and like, they were like, are you going to write about this? And I'm like, this is pretty standard. Like, I don't, like, we, we did write about like the ballot challenges, but like, there were some things that, like somebody, I was like, oh my God, they're getting so many questionnaires. And I was like, yeah, if you run for office, you're going to get a lot of questionnaires. Like, I, I don't know. Like, I think there's sort of the double-edged sword of like, we have, we have a democracy and we have, you know, a political, with that comes politics. And like, I think there's, you know, nastiness that comes with that, but there's also like a lot of beautiful debate that can come out of it. And so I do think that, no, we haven't seen a lot of that aflamed rhetoric. But as you maybe saw or heard as I outlined, like, we do have some people who clearly like are more pro-choice or like were proponents of the tax credit scholarship program, which the teachers' union and some progressives are very, very against because they argue it. The teachers' union and some progressives were very, very against because they argue it drains money from school system, public school systems, so. Um, you know, you may see those kinds of divisions around um school.
And they, and they do have to report where their uh money comes from, right?
Yeah, and I didn't put much of that in this presentation, I kind of little ran out of steam late, like yesterday, but. I encourage folks to read the, um, to, just like on our website, we've written two different stories now, and then also. The Sun Times and BEZ have been, um, pu- they have a published tracker, and that's live right now, but it. It doesn't say who, but it tracks just the amount of money, um, let me get that and drop that link in. We're at like more than seven hundred thousand dollars going into these races so far. But one, one thing I will say is when you're looking at the candidate contributions, um, the. A lot of them are. Like, just, I don't know, like families, friends, individuals, um, I know that there were some, there are some, been some folks who are like self-funding, basically loaning themselves. Uh, money, Bruce Leon, they gave himself ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, Che Rhymefest also, I think seventy-five thousand dollars of his is just like a self-funded loan to himself. Um, it's his own money, and then, and then what we have been seeing in August, really since our July story, which was looking, looking at the quarterly filings. We saw a lot more spending from the union, um, mostly in the form of in-kind, but it's like. Basically paying for the field staff of all of their endorsed candidates, which really matters in a race like this, and I've talked to some folks who don't have the CTU endorsement. Who, um, you know, have said like, it's really hard to compete with like all their boots on the ground when I'm like trying to. You know, just do it volunteer or like raise money, I only have five thousand dollars that I've raised so far versus like somebody with sixty thousand or seventy thousand. Um, so, yeah, we've got some uh money reporting, and I'll find that tracker really quickly for you guys, um, so you can. Uh, share that out to folks too. Um, I just also got another direct message from Maddie. Um, as a mom, what question would you ask the school board candidates? Oh, man, that's really hard because you're asking me to take off my journalist hat, which is hard for me to do. Well, my, my children are little, um, I have one, I'm, I'm lucky, I'm lucky, I got. Um, into one of the Montessori, public Montessori schools, so, um, we had a call the week before school, uh, because I. Put an application in for my oldest when he was three and um. Got on the waitlist and figured, oh, well, that's not gonna happen, and then they called the week before her school, and then they were like, we have a spot for Maxwell if you'd like it. So he's been there, this is his third year, he's now in kindergarten, he's been with the same teacher for three years. That's how Montessori cycle works, um, and my little one, who's three now, is in three K, so I feel very lucky, um, that I like. Not everybody gets a spot in pre-K, let alone in the Montessori pre-Ks, um, so I'll just acknowledge that privilege upfront. Um, but, you know, it's also CPS school with a lot of diversity, um, and income diversity, it's near the United Center and. This, y- you know, Suter, Suter is the name of the school, actually, if anybody read the book, There Are No Children Here, um. That was the school that the family went to, used to serve the Henry Horner Homes, um, it was. One of those schools that they closed and reopened with a new model, um, and by most accounts is a very successful school. What question would I ask school board candidates, though, um? I think, I think the question that I would ask them is like, how can you ensure? That our system. Is, like, how, how will you ensure that our system is healthy and thriving and not always in crisis mode? I will say like, I feel like when it comes to money, I get really like exhausted as a reporter, um. And I just, I feel like it's, it's important to have a responsible budget that like resources schools and frankly pushes more money down to the school. Um, I think, you know, maybe this is, again, I, I've been in my journalism hat, because I know this, because I look at the numbers, like. They always tout how much more they're sending to schools, but when you look at the pie chart of the budget, like. It's just a little over half that goes to, to schools directly, and there's just like so much else that goes to like legacy debt and, um. Administration or, you know, that stuff, I wish I could like. Ask board members, how are you gonna get more resources to the school level? And empower like principals and like the, the LSCs to put them to use how they see fit versus like keeping it. Up here.
I'll ask one more.
Yeah, great, I love questions.
What does Chalkbeat have planned for the rest of this uh election? Do you have other things that you're getting ready to, uh? Get started or finish up or push out?
Yeah, thank you for asking that, yes, and we, as I mentioned, we are launching our voter guide with the Sun Times and WBEZ. And our voter uh profiles with. Um, Block Club on Wednesday, we are also right now working on scheduling. And I'm glad to know you guys have one on October seventh, so we won't use that date, but we are working on scheduling a series of uh dis- district debates. Um, so one per district. Uh, we will livestream them, but we don't, the space that we have to use. We're not doing like a live audience, we're gonna do like a livestreamed audience instead of a, like a come, we're not doing that like a school auditorium, unfortunately. Um, partly because we're trying to do ten of them, and we're gonna tape them over the course of three days and livestream them, share them, um. And those, we have to get candidates RSVP'd for first, so I haven't really promoted them yet because we haven't figured out the scheduling. Um, but we're hoping to do that the first or second week of October, second week, second week of October, so like the eighth, ninth, tenth, I think are the dates we're like. Hoping for, um, and we also have plans to do sort of printed and. Like printed versions of our guides and do sort of boots-on-the-ground outreach to get. More people familiar with both Chalkbeat and just these elections, um, so we haven't, we're in the process of sort of. Developing, once we get all the digital versions launched, um, developing kind of like handout level. Whether that's a postcard with a QR code that we put at coffee shops, or, um, I know with Sun Times, we are already in discussions with like. Printing like a, you know, like a multi-page issue, I don't know if it'll be like, yeah, like an issue of the paper. Um, that's not gonna be mailed to subscribers, but like that we would then use as outreach and drop at libraries and drop in places and distribute through. Organizations like yours, so if you're okay with me maybe pinging you back in a couple of weeks, um, we're, we're looking at to, to ways we can do. More distribution of a lot of this digital content. Um, and then, we're just trying to stand top of the reporting, I mean. My team is keep an eye on and a watch of like what will happen with the current appointed board. Um, with this current administration, the CPS CEO and the mayor, um. I hate to editorialize, but it's a mess right now. So trying to sort through the mess of it all, um, is something we'll be continuing to do, and that we'll always do. And we'll do once all of these elections are over and people tune out, like, we realize that a lot of voters may just come to us like the week before November fifth. Or on November fifth, they'll Google like, school board voter guy, and like hopefully find us, and then that's it, you know, they use it to vote, but that's okay, like. We're also gonna be here when people want to learn about like how the strategic plan is going and what's up with arts education, and you know, that's what Chalkbeat does. That's like our bread and butter and, um, or folks who are, you know, ha- our parents or even just, you know, interested and passionate about. Educating the next generation, that's what we, that's our mission, so.
I'm wondering if there are, we couldn't do some cross-fertilization here, I mean, we have an Illinois voter guide that'll be coming up, and uh. Uh, Ray and the Schools Committee uh sent in, uh, sent out uh questions, a, a, a small survey, six questions, but. It seems to me, um, Ray, that we might want to uh see if we can get a link to some of the, um. Answers, some of the guides that they are producing, since you're all doing this completely nonpartisan as well, I, it, correct. At your, your, it's a.
Yes, yeah, we're independent, sorry.
I was just confirming, I assumed, but I wanted to confirm, but I'm also wondering. Are, are you all, um, keeping any kind of a clearinghouse of forums that have occurred, and we will. Have some sort of a recording that you might find useful, uh, if you've got a clearinghouse of what's been going on, or. I don't know.
No, I like that, we, um, we haven't been really collecting them yet, because part, like, I feel like a lot of them are just starting, I, I feel like one of them happened. Yeah, maybe, I know Raise Your Hand held like three of them, or is. Yeah, um, we haven't yet, but, um, certainly open to it, and again, uh. One of the other things, as I was mentioning, I have to like create that page for the explaining series, um. We, we're putting them all, I've been working with somebody on our team who like does a lot of the backend of our website, we will have like a. A page dedicated to school board elections, so, um, I can ask them if there's like a way to have a box from like. With like outside org events and, and links out to like the recordings from other forums. Um, that's not a bad idea, so we've, yeah, totally open to it.
Hey, thank you. Okay. Was there any other uh questions, I? So anybody else have a question, let us know. Nope, there's no more questions here on the chat, um. So nobody else has any questions, uh, Becky, do you have any follow-up uh information or?
Um, I don't, I, what I can do is I can take the links I've referenced and put those in my presentation, and I'm happy to share the. Slides if you want, I can send the, what I did, uh, Ray, is I had a few, I can update what I sent you guys last night, and then. Just to give you the most updated version with the updated links, then people can do the slides as a resource, I'm comfortable with that. Um, if you guys want them, uh, for anyone who.
Okay, I'm sure. Somebody will know how to do that.
Um, but other than that, no, I, I really appreciate you guys uh inviting me and being readers and listener, or readers of Chalkbeat, I. Um, you know, we, we really appreciate. Everything that you guys do and, um, happy to uh join and, and share this information with your members.
Well, I know people come up after listening for a while and digesting, they will be coming up with questions in the next several days, but. Um, and we will have this recording online that they can go to. Big of Women Voters Chicago and find, find this program, so if they weren't able to. Be online this morning, they can get the information, and they can find out about Chalkbeat.
Ah, and if you guys have, um, I will also, I can drop my, my email and information, if anybody does have questions, you can always email me. Um, we're, I'm pretty responsive to readers when they have either questions or like, or like, have you written about this? I can direct you to a link, so. Um, feel free to email me directly.
Nope, Catherine, again.
That's just me clapping, that's just me clapping.
So much, Becky, this, it, this was amazing and very timely and, uh, you know, we, we are excited to. Continue the conversation around school board and how we can get more people activated and paying attention.
Yes, yes, that's the important thing, people wait till the last minute, so I imagine come the end of October, there'll be a lot of people asking.
Yeah, right, they'll come to this and they'll be like, oh, great, I can look up, look it up now from, yeah.
Yes, yes, so we will be able to let them know where to look. Thank you very much, this is, thank you very much for coming and willing to answer all our questions.